Good evening. At 6:00 PM, June 22, 2022, I'd like to open the zoning board of appeals meeting for this evening. Also like to announce that this is being televised live on local channel 18. Now, if we could all rise, we'll say the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next, does anybody have a public comment regarding anything not related to any agenda items tonight? If so, you can check in with Mary Ann. You'll have three minutes to make a comment. All right, looks like we're good on that. And I'm going to ask for public comment on each hearing tonight at the end of that presentation. Okay, Ron and Jim are absent tonight, so sitting on our first hearing will be our three regular board members, as well as George and Brad. So Sharon, would you read the first new hearing, please?
Forty-sixth Main Street. Petitioners, James K. Williams requests an extension of a written finding, finding 218-25 under 174-17 in a variance V-2018-26 under 174-31 of the zoning bylaw that was issued in June 2018 for a raise and replace of a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling on property located in R5 zoning district, map 47, parcel 5, Mashpee, Mass., owner of record, John F. D.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Jeffrey Johnson, and I'm here on behalf of James K. Williams, who's the trustee of Tombstone Trust, his cousin. John D. deeded the property into the trust not too long ago. And if you read the decision, for the first extension, we had informed the board that that was what was going to transpire. I don't know how many of you remember this case, but this was an old dilapidated house with a tree through it. And Jim, after permission from the board, tore it down and cleaned up the site and had hoped to build, but due to financial constraints, he asked for an extension, and we're unfortunately back before you, asking for another extension. This time, not only financial matters with regard to Jim, but also health matters. He's had a tough year, but he'd like to build on the property. And we would sincerely ask your indulgence. And we're here to field any questions. Nothing's really changed with regard to the site. It's much improved from the very first time we were here seeking relief. And I believe the neighbors were very pleased to see the old dilapidated house go. It's not really more complicated than that.
Okay, so this was originally done in June of 2018, four years ago. And I think you've... 2019, you came in. 2020, it says COVID hit, we know that. 2021, June 23, to be exact, was a one-year extension. And this is now the fourth request for an extension, right?
Yes, and I believe this will be the last, last one. Because if Mr. Williams, if he can't do it, he'll sell it to somebody who can. He's... He and his cousin have owned this property for a long time and had always hoped on building on it. And again, with the prices of lumber and everything, his budget's been cut pretty tight. And at this stage in his life, he's not anxious to take out a 30-year mortgage. So he's looking to raise some capital by selling off some other assets and to build the house with cash.
Is it your intention to build on this house, on this lot?
It's always been my intention, which is why I've owned it. I don't know how long I've owned it, but probably 20 years or something, a long time. So, you know, that's why I owned it, that's why I kept it. And the reason we've kind of been, or I've been sort of forced into, you know, the building aspect was that we tore the house down. And that, you know, I guess as a stipulation of that, we have to rebuild.
As you might know, because of your tear-down and rebuild bylaw, if Jim had bought this as a vacant lot, he could have built it as of right. But because it had a structure on it, we had to appear before you and get permission to tear down and rebuild. And not all towns have that bylaw, but we're doing our best to comply with it. And we would hope that this would be the last extension.
Okay, so...
I don't want to have to sell the lot. I'd like to keep the lot. And I just find it would be kind of financially irresponsible of me to build on it. So if I'm forced to sell it because I can't get an extension, then that's what I'd have to do.
Okay, last time you were here, I believe it was Scott that asked you if you were going to fill in the hole. Matter of fact, we wanted you to fill in, I guess as an indentation where the foundation was. Has that been taken care of?
Well, what I did is I took my mason over there to look at the foundation. And he said if I fill in the hole, it's going to be harder for him to repair it. And I wanted to use the foundation as a basis for like a garage-type structure. So, no, that has not been done because...
Okay, well, the reason why we asked you to do it was a safety hazard. You know, kids roaming on there, somebody trips and falls, doesn't see it, a young kid. And that's why we asked you to do it.
I think if anybody were to go to the site, you'd find it's fairly difficult to get back there because of the briars and other things. And as I understand it, that some of that foundation has fallen in, at least on one side. So it's not like it's a box that's open like an empty pool type thing. And I think that Jim...
So is the foundation really salvageable?
It's salvageable not for a house, but for a shed-type structure.
As a footing for a shed-type structure?
What I want to do is repair the block that's broken and fill in the hole and put a slab there. And that way, I'd have a shed with a concrete floor.
Can that be done now financially? Can you do that now?
I'd be working, I'd be, no.
I know it's hard. I've been to the site. It's hard to get to that site. But it is a safety hazard to have that, even though it is tough to get there.
Could I put a snow fence up around it?
You know, when we approved your last request, it was approved with the condition that the existing foundation be removed and/or filled to gray. That was...
I don't know how you can...
I don't remember that.
I mean, as a builder, it's going to be hard to reuse that foundation again and get it... You'd have to have a structural engineer stamp for a new... I mean, it's way too big for a shed.
Well, no, but that original house wasn't all built on that foundation. That foundation is smaller than the house that existed there. They had built...
Well, there's a question for the building commissioner.
Well, it depends what you call a shed. I mean, a shed is 200 square feet or less. Anything over 200 square feet, and it sounds like it's more than 200 square feet. And that has to come to the building codes, wind codes, everything else like that. So it doesn't sound like to me that the foundation is salvageable at all. Especially if a wall's collapsed.
Is it a block? Is it a block or is it poured concrete?
Block.
Block is, yeah.
I'm not a structural engineer, but a structural engineer would have to... Someone would have to sign off on that being...
But I wouldn't use the basement. What I'd be doing is just using the perimeter as a basis...
I'm not a structural engineer. I can't... Someone would have to sign and stamp that for him to approve a plan.
Yeah, somebody's got to put their name in it safe.
I, as one member, have, don't have an issue with the extension because building costs are just insane, and I get it. Health is another thing, and I get that, too. But you were asked to fill this in, and it didn't get done. I think something has to be done about that as one member. Because even though it's briars and all that, it's still a safety hazard. I mean, it's still an issue. I, as one member, that's just my opinion. I don't have a problem with the extension. I have a problem with that hole still being there.
Do you think you could get somebody to do it in 30 days, Jim?
Well, I could have somebody go over there and just cave it in. Is that...
That's a term you could call a cave-in, and I think you'd... You could fill it. You'd have to fill it, you know, bring some clean fill in there and just fill the hole. And then when you eventually build, they dig out your new... I don't know if the new house is going to go in the exact same spot. I don't know where the new house is going to go, but if your lot's big enough, you're going to move it.
In the back.
Yeah, so...
They have to fill it in anyway. They're only going to do a slab.
If that was the condition before, I think you have to fill it. I mean, that was the condition. And now you're asking for another extension, but you didn't do what we asked you to do last time. So I just, I know it's a tough lot to get into. It's really thick and briars. I remember going in there with Mike Mendoza, the old commissioner, and Chief Rulo. It was, you could only go walk so far. It was a bitch to get in. But it's still in there. And some kid could find his way in there coming in from the water, from the pond in the back, where he'd god-bet he fell in there, got hurt. That's just, you know, you were asked to do it before, so...
All right, would you be willing to fill it in if we give you an extension?
Yes.
Within 30 days?
I think it's going to be hard to reuse that foundation as a footing for a future garage or whatever you want to call it.
So you'd be willing to fill it in within 30 days?
Yes.
So we have a commitment on that? Sharon, I think we have something from the town planner?
Hope you did this one. Hi, John. According to chapter 40A, the board is only allowed to issue a six-month extension for 46th Main Street. Evan Town Planner confirmed this. Evan also suggested that the board ask the applicant what his intent is to rebuild. This is for Mary Ann.
Okay, so the max we can give you is six months?
I think if that's the max that the town planner says under the law, then that's acceptable. We'll have to find a way to make it happen.
Yeah, I'll tell you right now that I won't vote yes if you come back.
Thank you for your honesty.
You've already had, what, three, four bites of the apple? So I'm only speaking for myself. If you come back again, I won't vote for it. I won't extend it again.
We thank you for your patience and understanding.
I've been on this board 18 years. I've never heard of a full-year extension. I just don't think it's fair.
I think if they don't perform within the six months and don't fill in first within 30 days and don't perform within six months, you can't do anything without a reapplication. No more extensions.
That's as far as I'm concerned. I don't speak for anybody else.
We're just voting on the six-month extension right now.
Correct, that's what we're voting on.
Any more questions or comments here before I ask the audience? Anybody in the audience have any questions or comments? Yeah.
Order Health has no comments.
Anything else on this? No other comments from anyone?
No.
Nothing I saw.
All right, so again, George and Brad are on this. So Scott, would you make a motion on this, and it's again for six months?
I'd like to make a motion to reapprove 46th Main Street petitioner, James K. Williams, requests an extension of a written finding, finding 2018-25 in section 174-17 in a variance V-2018-26 under section 174-31 of the zoning bylaws that was issued in June 2018 for a raise and replace of a pre-existing non-conforming dwelling on a property located in R5 zoning district, map 47, parcel 5, Mashpee, Mass., with the following conditions. The board accepts the request of an extension of the written finding, finding 2018-25 in variance V-2018-26 for six months, conditioned that the old foundation hole be filled in within 30 days. And, hey, it's not on there. And conditioned on all town comments.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
George seconds, so let's do a roll call vote. George, how do you vote?
Yes.
Bob, how do you vote? I think, wait a minute, is it Bob?
Brad.
Excuse me, it's Brad.
Yes.
And Scott?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you kindly. Thank you.
I hit the wrong one.
No, no, this one didn't have it. You're right.
Oh, you got them fast, Jim.
Just because there was no comments. It didn't have that line about all the comments.
Make sure you sign the right line, folks.
Instead of the left line.
Not under the line, above the line.
Bob and Sharon, you're going to sit on the next one. Print your name underneath or whatever, sure.
All right, that makes sense.
Okay. We got all five on there? Sharon, would you read the next newer hearing, please? And again, Bob and Sharon will sit on this one.
35 Wilson Grove. Petitioner Robert T. Silman requests a written finding under 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to allow for an extension alteration of existing deck on property located in an R3 zoning district in Pompanesett Overlay District, map 118, parcel 87, Mashpee, Mass. Owner of record, Robert T. Silman and Anne Marie Colebrook, Frederick S. Silman and Helen Louise Cateese.
Hi.
Good evening, members. My name's Rob Silman, 35 Wilson's Grove, and I'm representing my family for this task.
So just let us know what you want to do.
We, at present time, we have an eight-by-12 deck that needs to be demolished. And we'd like to replace it with a larger deck, which would be 10 by 20.
How high off the ground is it going to be?
Less than two feet.
Okay, is it going to have a step down into the backyard?
One step, yes.
One step?
One step.
Does that require railings or anything around it?
We are putting railings on the deck, yes.
Less than two feet, you're not required to.
I know that. We have, I have a handicapped sister, so we'll be putting also a ramp.
Maybe a ramp type thing?
Yes.
Great, okay. And is it going on cinder blocks or...?
No, we have 12-inch cement columns that we're going to, we're going to put it on.
Sonotubes or...?
Yeah, the plans say sonotubes.
Thank you, sonotubes, yes.
Got it. Okay. And the... See, the lot coverage is going from 22.5 to 24.8?
Yes.
A little confusing because it says existing lot coverage, and it says existing lot coverage. So proposed...
It's a typo.
I assume that's a typo. The 24 rates the proposed lot coverage.
Yes, yes.
And I think the Pompanesett Overlay allows...
Larger than that.
25 or 30?
25.
25, yeah, so they're under.
The interesting thing about this proposal, it was brought to the, it was brought here in 2016, maybe?
15, 2015.
And exceeded the lot coverage at that time.
Oh, interesting.
So it did not, it was approved because it was increasing the lot coverage to, you know, close to 25%.
May I ask when that effect came in?
I think it was 20...
Couple of years ago, maybe?
December 12, 2014 is the site plan.
No, the changing of 2025.
Oh, when did that go into effect?
Change of the lot coverage, right.
That's the Pompaneset Overlay, I got the...
This is the original site plan.
2017.
2017.
Unfortunately, I wasn't...
No, it was amended 2/21/2018. It was changed to 25%.
Got it.
Yep.
That was the, must have been the town meeting.
So it conforms to the lot coverage, but it's extending a non-conforming.
Got it.
Which is allowed under what their application is asking for.
And there's no issue with the rear setback? Because there's no...
No, there's no increase.
No.
Oh, the old deck was 10? No, the old deck was less than 10. Oh, the old deck 10 by 20.
So it's going to be 30.37 feet from the rear?
Oh, 30, I think it's 30.37, so there. And what do you need, 25 or 15 on the rear, right?
Right.
Yeah, all right, I got no issues.
Anybody have questions or comments?
No.
David?
I'm good.
Sharon, what do we have?
Order Health.
Order Health. The deck shall be constructed so the access is maintained to the septic tank in that no structural members are placed on the tank. Supports shall extend below the tank bottom so that no side pressure is placed against the septic tank. And that's it, no other comments.
Anybody else on the board have any comments? Anybody in the audience? Okay, seeing none. Scott, would you make a motion on this?
I'd like to make a motion to approve 35 Wilson's Grove. Petitioner Robert T. Silman requests a written finding under section 174-17 of the zoning bylaws to allow for an extension alteration of an existing deck on a property located in an R3 zoning district in Pompaneset Overlay District, map 118, parcel 87, Mashpee, Mass. Owners of record, Robert T. Silman, Anne Marie Colebrook, Frederick S. Silman and Helen Louise Cateese, with the following conditions. The board has determined that the applicant meets all the conditions of a written finding in the Mash General Law 48, section 6. Certified site plan prepared for 35 Wilson's Grove Mashpee, Mass. Date December 12, 2014. Scale 1 inch equals 20 feet prepared by Eastbound Land Surveying Incorporated. Stamped and signed by Rob Sykes, number 35418, dated 11/12/2015. Conditioned on all town department comments read into the record. Conditioned that any changes to the plans will require the applicant, the applicant to return to the zoning board of appeals.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, Sharon's second, so Bob, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Sharon?
Yes.
And Scott?
Yes.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Good luck.
Thank you very much, board.
Take care.
George and Charlie, you're going to sit on the next one.
Are you going to anything? We don't have voting.
There's no load.
We have to other business.
Don't we have to vote whether it's a minor or a major modification?
It's not the request.
Well, if we have to vote, that's his voting.
If we have to vote, go ahead and assign people.
George and Charlie. So they're here to basically say that it is a minor modification.
We have to determine the discussion.
Okay.
So I don't know if it requires a formal vote or not, but we can do that.
Do we need a vote for that, Mary Ann? For determination of minor and major? Can't hurt, you're right.
All right. Sharon, would you read the first other business, please? And again, George and Charlie, sit on this.
Mashpee Commons Limited partnership, MCLP, and Jobs Lighting Trust, JWT, to discuss notice of project change pursuant to the provisions of 760 CMR 56.0511A, Chapter 40B regulations.
Hi. Hi.
Good evening. Shall I proceed, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Thank you. For the record, Peter Freeman from Freeman Law Group in Yarmouth Port, representing the applicant. And with me tonight from Mashpee Commons is Tim Ferranti.
Tom.
Tom, I know it's Tom. I know it's Tom. I don't know why I slipped into Tim. No, I called you Tom on the phone. Tell them I called you Tom on the phone, anyway. Thank you. A rose by any other name. That's funny. Sorry about that. But in any case, it really is quite simple. The letter that I sent dated May 26 of this year explains that the project is proceeding with a phase that has been ongoing. And they believe that it is more in tune with the market now and with their project planning to proceed with rental units. 38 of the units were asking to be changed from the so-called tenure in the terms of the regulations, meaning no longer home ownership, just 38 units. But those 38 would become rental. So we do believe that it's an insubstantial change. The basic guideline in the 40B regulations, which I cited, talk about a variety of kind of indicators. Nothing is etched in stone, for sure. And one of the main benchmarks is if there's changes that are less than 10% of the total units, or 10% of the height, or different things like that, they're generally considered insubstantial. I did point out in my memo, in fairness, that the regulation does say that a change in tenure can be treated as substantial, but it also, under the regs, clearly can be treated as an insubstantial. And in this case, with a large project of 382 units, to ask for this change as it affects only 38 units, we think is indeed insubstantial. And also, it reflects, really, I think, the need for housing that is in the community, the Cape as a whole, but the dire need for rental affordable units in particular. So that's really as simple as it is, so I'll just stop there. And certainly, if you have any questions, Tom and I would be happy to answer.
I have, I have one question. And it might be in here, and maybe I missed it. But the original proposal for the 38 units, what was the mix between sale and rental?
So if you want to go back to, I'm sorry, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm Tom Ferranti, the director of planning and construction for Mashpee Commons. If you go back to the original, original permit process in 2006, 2007, the area that is referred to as what we currently Phase 1 had 105 units in it, of which at the time, I don't remember how many were rental. But when we revisited things in 2013, Phase 1 increased to 179 units, of which 38 were for sale and 141, 141 were identified as rental.
Rental, okay. Now you're changing the 38 that were for sale to rental.
Correct, so all 179 in Phase 1 would be rental units.
Would be rental, okay.
Does that increase the amount of affordable rental units?
So we would continue that progression as we go through the remainder of the one seventy-nine.
So the thirty-eight, again, are changing to?
Rental.
Rental.
On sale, sale.
From sale.
And of those thirty-eight that were for sale, how many of those were affordable?
We didn't identify the affordability, the affordable units in the remainder of Phase One during the exercise. We only identified the affordable units within Phase One A. So as we, as we continue to expand upon the, the phase and the progression, those affordable units are identified as we go along.
But you're still meeting the twenty-five percent?
Correct. We are still meeting the twenty-five percent. And, you know, to Peter's point, this still leaves two hundred units on the south side of Job's Fishing Road that are for-sale units, currently shown as for-sale units.
Right.
Okay. So refresh my memory, how many total units were affordable?
In the original permit, there are three hundred and eighty-two total units, of which ninety-six are affordable.
So that ninety-six number stays the same?
Correct.
Yes.
Across the total of the three eighty-two. That is not changing.
Now, just only because I don't know, this is for Attorney Freeman, I guess, out of the, out of the twenty-five percent, do any of them have to be sale units, or they can be all rental units? If twenty-five percent of the?
Affordable?
Yeah, the affordable, can they be, are they a mix of rental and sale?
The intent, as I believe intended by the subsidizing agency, Mass. Housing, would be that they're spread between the rentals and the affordables. I don't think we had any intention of, you know, doubling up or changing the percentage as between for-sales and rental, so it's twenty-five percent.
And they do the lottery and all of that?
Yeah, correct.
Yes, they, the agency monitors that. The applicant is responsible for hiring the lottery agent, which of course they've done for the?
Whether it's for sale or for rent, it's the lottery.
Yes, correct, absolutely.
All right.
Okay, so were you planning a mix of for-sale rentals as well as, excuse me, affordable rentals?
And sale.
And for-sale?
Correct. The way that it's structured, the intent of the permit, is that if you're building three hundred and eighty-two units and you have a mixture of unit types and tenure types, you have affordability distributed across that variety. You can't build three hundred and eighty-two units with half being for-sale one-bedroom units and half being four-bedroom for-sale houses and make all your affordable the one-bedroom units. So the intent is to allocate the affordable units across the spectrum of the project, depending if it's a one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom rental, or two-bedroom, three-bedroom, four-bedroom for-sale, the affordability gets distributed.
Is that regulated by the forty Bs, by the state?
Yes, it would still be regulated by the agency.
So they have to follow what they tell you to do?
Correct, absolutely, with a regulatory agreement that's a binding.
Would you change to how many sale, how many rental, you still have to follow what they tell you to do?
Yeah.
Right. Do they, part of that agreement with the state, do you have to have a certain percentage of rentals that are affordable?
No.
No.
Just twenty-five percent.
Just twenty-five percent.
Well, the, the answer is yes, but it's twenty-five percent. The, the state requires that.
But the mix of rental and sale doesn't matter? Of how many are rental, how many are sale? That doesn't matter?
I don't think so.
Only what we would propose as the applicant and what the, and what the board would approve.
Right.
So majority of forty Bs, at least in this area, are for-sale. You know, there's very few rental forty Bs, at least on the Cape. I think as you get off Cape, you might find a little bit differently. But I think as what we've all seen here is that with home prices the way they are, there is a need for some variety of housing typologies here.
I totally agree, there's a huge need on the Cape and other areas, too, that there's just not enough rental property.
Yeah.
What are you seeing, one, two, three-bedroom of the most that you want?
Well, currently, we only have one bedrooms and two bedrooms within our forty B project. We do have some studio units within Mashpee Commons, but the plan is to increase a variety of unit typologies as we go forward, thinking that we would bring some more three bedrooms into the fold, simply because what we're finding is that there are more families that are looking for rental units, and families need a little bit more space. My family does not fit in a two-bedroom, so.
These are units that have not yet been built, though.
Correct. We haven't even, I mean, I'm probably getting a little bit ahead of my skis here, but we're thinking conceptually about what we would bring into this phase. For where we are process-wise, this is kind of a gating issue for us to, to figure out whether or not the board is going to be amenable to this, this change in tenure. That starts to dictate some of the land planning that we do, but what we would like to do is, is bring in some variety with, with larger unit types that, that have three bedrooms, because we don't currently have that offered right now, and we think that there's a need.
Did you get any really, I guess you'd call it, maybe scientific facts that say you should, we need more rentals on the Cape, or is this just two people sitting down saying, yeah, I think that's the way to go?
I would like to say that, you know, I'm smart enough to make that determination. I'm, I'm not, there are people far smarter than I. We have had conversations with, with members of the Association of Realtors, with folks that do market studies, and basically what everybody says is, we just need more types of housing. There's too much pressure on the market right now with only for-sale homes, that bringing in rental homes will actually start to reduce pressure in other parts of the market. If you look at the skyrocketing price of housing in Barnstable County at six hundred and twenty thousand dollars, you know, even if you're making two hundred percent of the median income, that down payment is next to impossible to come up with in a, in a bidding war with somebody paying cash. So this, these rental units start to open up some more flexibility to get other year-round members of our community into housing that they wouldn't otherwise be able to do.
I, I can tell you from another part of my life, the inventory for rental units is so low.
It's because of the DRVO?
Right.
The people renting by the week is killing the rental market.
It's killing it.
Yeah.
Everywhere, everywhere on the Cape, on the, on the islands, it's unbelievable.
And one of the things that, you know, the people smarter than me have mentioned is that when you have rental units, it allows you to keep those for year-round residence, that the way the market is right now, anything that's in the for-sale market, there's a high likelihood that that home will end up in, in a second, as a second home at some point in the not-too-distant future. So we can control the initial sale of it, but who knows what happens after that. As a rental unit, all of our leases right now, all of our leases right now are year-round leases. So we don't have short-term rentals, we don't have six-month, we have year-round leases.
Are your owners, when, when, do you have something with a forty B, if someone buys a unit, are they not allowed to rent it by the week?
So we don't allow sublets in our rental units, so the person that rents the unit is the person that lives in the unit.
But not the rental units, I'm talking about?
They rent them.
We don't have anything for sale right now.
Oh.
At all, we have seventy-seven total units across our property right now, and all of them are rental.
Okay, but I just didn't know if you have something, when you do the sale items, will it be something in it that they can't, can they rent them? If you buy a unit, can you, are they allowed to rent it?
We've started to look into some of those questions. I don't know legally what you can do when you sell a house. I don't know if you can put a restriction like that.
There are condo, I know, you know, like in Florida, there are condo associations where they say you cannot rent your unit.
Yeah, and, and I think that that's probably about the only path that we could look at when we get to that point.
I was just curious if that was something with a forty B, if you're, if you buy a forty B house, are you allowed to rent it to somebody?
Yeah. The, the market unit is subject to the control of the developer initially and then the homeowner association, but as to the, to the affordable units, naturally, they cannot be rented out or subleased. They have to be, they have to be tenant.
It's really not relevant to what you're asking, I just more of my knowledge, I'm just curious.
Yeah, there, I mean, the forty B nuances are, are vast, so happy to answer the questions.
So a hundred percent or twenty-five percent or ninety-six units could either be sales, a sale, or a rental. Is that right?
Say that again?
George, speak in the mic.
So a hundred percent of the twenty-five percent or ninety-six units of affordable housing could be either rentals or sales. There's no, there's no restriction, like there's fifty-fifty or anything like that?
No, there's no percent, I think we already answered.
Only as so much as it matches the percentage of that unit type across the board. So if you have fifty percent rental and fifty percent for-sale across the total project, you can't have a hundred percent as rental.
Right.
You have to, yeah.
There is proportionality.
And they ask me, so many equal like one-bedroom, two-bedroom, they can't just say all one-bedroom and studios.
Right.
Informationally?
Who's that?
When does the designation have to be made in the construction process as to whether it's going to be forty B or not?
We had to identify it during the building permit process, because the building department was the group that tracked it from start to finish, and, and if I remember correctly, there's something in the occupancy permit that, that basically deems that unit as an affordable unit. So it's, it's tracked on, on a couple different levels.
Thanks. Any final questions, comments?
I don't know how, as one, if, we're just trying to determine if this is a major or minor modification.
Substantial and substantial.
If I, if I may, just to, to answer that point, yes, basically what the regulation simply called for is for you to vote on a determination that the change is insubstantial, and the effect of that is that the request to change the thirty-eight units to rental is approved. You don't have to write any official change, you know, just a letter acknowledging it or even the minutes, so you don't have to write up a decision changing the?
Yeah, I'm gonna, thank you. I'm gonna see if there's anybody in the audience has any comments. Anybody?
Nope.
Okay. So they're asking, Scott, they're asking for this to be an insubstantial change, so that's what the motion should be.
Insubstantial.
So we vote yes if we think it's insubstantial, we vote no if we don't.
So a yes is that we agree that it's an insubstantial?
That it's insubstantial.
That's all you need.
Right. So again, it's George and Charlie on this.
Right, got it.
Yes.
I have to, there's no motion, I have to write this.
Take the time.
And I'm no lawyer.
Don't worry.
Maybe you could write this. No.
There's no conditions, right?
No.
Will a voice, vote be substantial?
A simple motion to say that we, we, I move to determine that the request in the letter dated May twenty-six, twenty twenty-two from Peter Freeman, to change thirty-eight units from for-sale to rental is an insubstantial change.
That's kind of what I just wrote there, so.
So we would include, include the letter?
Well, we're going to, we're gonna enter the letter into the record anyway.
Yeah, add that.
I think you summed it up well, so we're not gonna have to read this in.
Oh, sure, yeah, you don't, you don't need to.
Freeman Law Group?
Freeman Law Group.
May twenty-sixth?
June first.
Received.
There's another one left.
So you'll have to stand and sign that.
All right. I'm ready.
Okay.
All right.
Scott, would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'm gonna make a mo, I'd like, I'd love to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve that the change from sale of, from, from the sale of thirty-eight units to rental units be an insubstantial change, conditioned that the letter from Freeman Law Group dated June first, twenty twenty-two be entered into the record.
Do you think there's anything we need to add to that, Peter?
Um, just one quick note, the, the date is May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, that was a received.
Oh, that was, I'm sorry. I gotta change that date from, to May twenty-sixth?
Yes, May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two.
I got that.
My fault.
You should have just done it yourself.
Did we just ask if they still had comments? Did you do?
We did.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, that's my motion.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
George seconds.
Yes.
Charlie says yes. George?
Yes.
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 And I vote yes.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We're, we're excited to, we're excited to get going, and, and I think we're gonna be, we're gonna be seeing each other quite a bit in the coming weeks and months, so thank you, we're looking forward to this.
It's been years since you've been in here.
It's been a while.
It's needed.
Yeah.
How many parking spaces?
Uh, seven, seven parking spaces.
I tried to go to the post office yesterday, couldn't.
Are we gonna start the parking conversation already?
Don't we do that every year?
Yes, we do.
I'm glad it's busy there.
Yes, it's, you know what, I say this every time, and none of you like it, but it's better than having empty parking lots.
Yeah, well, I agree.
This is true, this is true.
Nah, I just wanted to go by there.
Thank you all very much, have a great night.
Don't worry about it.
It's fine.
And they were doing work on the road, too. They had all the parking.
Everybody goes to the, to the post office, it's the easiest one to go to.
I have a job, I drive by twice a day, so I just.
For me, it's not, because I gotta go around the rotary.
Ah, okay. You want me to?
Road trip.
I know, every day to get someplace, I'm going around that rotary.
Yeah, it's good.
We have a signature?
No, I'm just signing, I'm just signing the slip.
Just the letter to put in the record.
I think it's great that they're gonna do more rental units.
I'm a son of a.
Such a need, unfortunately, they're not gonna, they're not gonna be able to. At least they're going through the process.
Okay, Sharon, would you read the next other business, please?
I'd like to make a motion, I move that we approve the meeting minutes of June eighth, two thousand twenty-two.
Second.
Phil seconds, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so, hold on just one second. Okay, the board is now going to enter into executive session to have a strategy discussion with respect?
John, hold on.
Are you coming back out of executive session?
I'm gonna get to that.
All right, I need to take it off the air.
Well, I have to read this before we take it off the air, because he's gotta make the motion, then we have to vote.
I apologize.